Where the, if the applicant wishes to respond to any of the opposing testimony, we'll give them 15 minutes to be able to respond to testimony. Briefly say it. Welcome back. So we'll go ahead and start. So we'll, we'll have 15 minutes for your testimony in addressing the opposition's comments.
Thank you again. I'm Morgan Will. I'll just speak briefly and then I'm going to hand over the mic to my associates. I just want to point out to the staff again that there is a traffic study in the application and some of the questions raised by the citizen who appreciate their testimony are addressed on page three where it talks about the, the traffic counts, existing traffic counts. We go in and we analyzed the, what they call background traffic. So we looked at the existing approved subdivisions in the area, including the Oak Ridge Meadows, which is approved by the city council very recently. We looked at Baker Creek South Development and then we included those background traffics in our analysis and also applied a growth rate for the future. So we're not just looking at now. And that's again on page three of the application. And then on page four, it continues with the total trip estimates. And there was some discussion about, you know, whether the trip count was inaccurate or not. I want to again point out in table 1A of the traffic report, we talk about 280 dwellings, which that 9.44 rate that the gentleman mentioned is this industry standard for single-family dwellings resulting in 2,643 homes. And then the industry standard for a 10,000 square foot, 10 acre commercial results in 3,775 trips. So our analysis looked at all of the existing growth rate, all developments around and this development and a hypothetical 10,000 square foot commercial development and the, all the intersections function under that. Of course, that we're only proposing 2,643 trips of residential, of 280 dwellings in table 1A. So the 3,775 trips are not going to be impacting the network now. So if there was any discrepancy with our, you know, professional engineer who stamped this report and found that there's plenty of capacity and, and the citizens' study, the marginal amounts, this are, we're proposing less than half of these actual trips to be added. And so I wanted to say that, that is in the report.
Thank you, Morgan.
In addition to what Morgan's comments were, I just wanted to say that, you know, traffic's something that comes with the development. Absolutely. There's no question about it. And that there's not much more that we can do about it as a developer who sits on a couple of major arterials with land inside the urban growth boundary with some density mandates and, you know, designs. I mean, we didn't invent the whole density mandate. We're here to respond to it, which I think is very responsive to all levels of a housing need in McMinnville. But that brings with it money to go ahead and build highway improvements and roadway improvements through system development charges. And it's all about what you guys decide to do with those monies on the CIP. Next thing I wanted to say is that it's very important for the building community and us, absolutely, to be able to have the driveway widths as we've proposed to be amended at least. First of all, as we proposed, as Councilor Gary, you know, pointed out in exhibit five, that's what we would prefer, but we're willing for a compromise and we provided an amendment to that. But also on condition 20. I think there's a lot of confusion on condition 20 that was sent out to the builders by Heather and maybe even all of you that do you understand that reading that condition 20, the bold print is our suggested revisions and the cross outs weren't. So I guess we're find ourselves in an intriguing position in that we feel that the condition 20 as proposed is something that we wouldn't want to live with by staff, condition 20 as by staff. The one that we have, we will live with and be able to move beyond. So if you were, I guess, desirous of accepting our revised condition 20 and approving the subdivision or the PD, we would be willing to do that. And if not, we would prefer that the hearing be continued in order to allow us to have more time to work with staff to come up with the workable condition 20. So we'd rather not have an approval with the condition 20 as proposed by staff. We'll accept our revisions, which I think is a compromised solution. And if that can't happen, we'll toll the clock and we'll request that you continue the hearing in order for us to work further. Staff.
And to clarify, you're saying that you had told 120 day clock an equivalent amount of time as we, as the city would be granted for the continuance?
Right. And Heather just briefly mentioned maybe February 18th.
Thank you.
25? I mean, we're amenable to this. We've been working on this for years and there is a whole bunch of effort by everyone in this room and others have put into this application and we just have to come up with something that is acceptable to all. We want to be good community citizens.
Okay. Any other, any other testimony? Okay. So we've heard you.
Can we ask questions or no?
Go ahead, yes.
So driveway widths, why, we know why you want them wider, but why can't you just make them wider by having less lots?
By having less lots?
Yeah.
You know, I would love, one of the people who came up here and testified gave out some information about the unaffordability of housing, no matter what it is we're trying to buy. I, I mean, Bill, I'm telling you, $345,000 is a very difficult price point to get to and we're trying to provide that diversity of housing. If we just came in here and said, the only thing we're going to produce are 550 to $750,000 houses, some in the room would be very satisfied and others would be still left within the community without the ability to buy homes. I guess there's a whole bunch of homeowners that, or would be homeowners that would like the diversity of housing and like the choices and like a planned development. The way these live, look and feel and being able to activate and get people out there is important. So do we want to be another homogenized, unaffordable neighborhood? That's, I guess, you know, choice.
So what is the likely price point for these 2,600 square foot lots? I mean, with the house on them?
The houses in there? We're trying to hit as close to 300 as that we can, you know, like just under if we could. I tried that before, but you know, we've had extreme labor shortage, right? We've had extreme increases in supplies and materials. And to be able to deliver a house for 345 is what LGI has been able to do. We're, like I said, we're building 385 to 570, mainly 485 is the target that seems to want to sell. So we want to be able to provide, my partner Rick is the one that runs the home building. He says, you know, I want to get close right there to 300 as we can. We have to respond to the market. Is $300,000 affordable? But yeah, you, you just can't do it for less. I hate to even say that. But it will be the most affordable new home product that we can deliver to the market.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I guess just to clarify my question, I wasn't saying you couldn't build the diversity in your housing. I was saying if you went from 280 lots to 270 lots, wouldn't that meet all your setbacks and all your driveway widths without?
Well, and if, if council is to say no, and if we can't arrive at some sort of other, I guess, you know, compromise on the, the condition 20, I mean, we'll come back in as a subdivision and we could even do a subdivision in pieces. We think about the slots. This is a significant investment. And what happens if we take the PD off of it, the planned development overlay? That takes away the city's ability to extract community benefit out of us. And the big community benefit is that natural park. All right? So, you know, it's gone over and over. What we're really asking for is setback variance. And that's side setback. Everything else is standard and meets it. So we come back in with small subdivisions at a time, try and piece this thing together one at a time. It's just a lot more efficient for everyone's time to come in and it's hard to swallow the large pill at one time for a lot of people saying, wow, there's 280 lots. But you know, it's 10 phases over years. So yeah, can we go back to the driveway and find another solution? Yes. But will larger lots make housing less affordable? Yes.
Follow-up question to that, you said take years. When in those years is that, would that road be connected to Oak Ridge Meadows that we already approved?
I think that's in 3B. And so if you look at the way it's phased, we have to go marching across, all the phasing is driven by access to the transportation route and utilities. So it's first is gravity flow sewer and, and you know, storm. And then the second phase has gravity flow and we get into, I think, 2B or 2C, what, what is it, Morgan? Where we build the pump station. And once we build the pump station, then we continue to go west and then we'll go toward the east. So it's probably three, possibly four construction seasons.
Thank you.
Other questions?
So to phase in all 10 phases, how many years would you estimate that would be? I mean, I know it's.
Well, if the economy doesn't break, right? So that, that's the big if, right? Anyone in the real estate development business understands 2008, 9, 10, 11, 12, and we will never forget it. It's an indelible memory. But we're projecting probably a five-year development cycle and probably a seven-year buildup.
Thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none? Thank you, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Okay. Before us right now, does the city council wish to continue or close the hearing? And I'm going to step back a little bit because I think we need to talk about number 20 because that's going to be the, the threshold to follow what they've asked us to do. So we have in front of us that which was amended by Stafford for 20. And so I'll just open up for discussion.
I actually have questions of staff.
Okay. Let's, and let's open up, we can open it up for staff during our discussions.
Is that okay? Yeah. I mean, so my question is what, what is the policy choice we're making here with respect to the width of these driveways? Is it mostly given the smaller setbacks that you're going to have less street parking as a result of bigger driveways or what? What's the story?
Yeah, so there, there's two considerations. We've, we've sat down and looked at this a couple of times per the requests of Stafford. So one is the on-street, on-street parking and relative to how wide the driveway cuts are. The other thing is as these lots get smaller and density becomes higher in these neighborhoods, we're also struggling to fit street trees and utilities and landscaping in the landscape strips between the homes. So it may just be two feet, but it's two feet aggregated with the next door and with either side of the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Why, why is that, why are those being preferred over common wall in this case? Or on the side, on the, on the side?
Oh, we have, we have heard from the development community in McMinnville that town homes and common wall homes are, are difficult for them to sell. We've heard that. It usually ends up in a rental market. There are a couple of town home projects that have done well, but most of them have not. So I, I'm assuming that's market choice.
Driven by demand then?
Yeah.
Can you talk a little bit about the language in this proposed?
Could you, Remy, can you bring?
Can you talk a little bit, just breaking this down, kind of on maybe some, not looking at the real meat of it first, but on some of these revisions, what is this, what does this read? Like this very first line is revised. So the condition in the packet, all front facades and public facing, building elevations must meet the following design standards. The revised version, all homes constructed in Baker Creek North shall meet the following design standards.
Yeah. So to be honest with you, we haven't had time to vet it entirely. We, this was submitted just days before we got the staff report and packet out, which we have to do a week in advance of the public hearing. It also spanned the three-day weekend as well. So we, as staff, we, I'm going to share with you, we have not looked at the conditions in any great depth in terms of the revisions. And that's why the discussion was if, if, if there's, if council would like to move forward with the development and the conditions are important and the applicant has shared with you that if they are not, they will withdraw their application if it moves forward with number 20 as presented in the, as recommended by the planning commission, I think, is it? And so if there's interest in having staff review it and vet it, then that's why we ask the applicant for more time to be able to do that. So we're not here tonight to be able to tell you what the differences are between their proposal.
You need more time to truly put quality.
I can tell you the, the crux of the issue for the three-car, single-story, three-car garage is the requirement that's in the design standard that 50% of the home, not more than 50% of the home be a garage wall for the front facade. And the intention behind that is you're not just looking at a garage as the front facade. However, with the size of the lots and the, the three-car garage, that's, that's where the problem lies in terms of being able to design that product into those size of lots. We did, if you'll see the conditions, the condition of approval, we originally heard this from the applicant and so we did look at what other communities have done and they've, they've allowed for the greater than 50% of the garage wall for the front facade if there was something above it. So it created more massing for that elevation. And so there are conditions in there that says you can exceed the 50% garage wall if these following conditions are achieved. And, and that's why you've heard from the development community tonight that single-story, three-car garage homes are the ones that are the most problematic within those design standards.
Any other questions of the planning department? If, if, if I heard Heather, it seems to me that what we'd want to do at this point is hold the public hearing open, giving staff the ability to go back and, and really put the time and effort in to come up with a, a solution or a product that fits within the criteria that we intended initially going through this process.
I heard that providing we like the rest of the subdivision.
Right. I mean, that's one.
If it only comes down to rule 20 or condition 20.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think that, you know, receiving a pretty extensive revision that hasn't been supplemented or hasn't been looked over, reviewed by staff, I mean, I would not be comfortable just saying, yeah, of course we'll, we'll accept this without addressing any of the other parts of the public hearing. I mean, that, I absolutely wouldn't be comfortable doing that.
So if we do that, Heather, if, so we hold the, what does it look like going forward then? When do we then deliberate about the rest of the, the rest of the criteria?
So you have on the record, the applicant has agreed to toll the clock to February 25, which would be your second meeting in February. And so the intent behind that was it would give us time to review and vet the materials and then get it out again a week in advance of that meeting so that there's public record for, public to review as well and be able to provide comment to you. You would need to make a decision that night.
And we can review all of the testimony and have the discussion that night? As like when we get all the information from you and that?
You, you would need to make, based on what the applicant has put on the record for tolling the clock, you would need to make a decision that evening.
So there's a bit of a challenge in this, right? If we don't deliberate tonight, first of all, and the, and the public hearing's held open, there's a missed opportunity for anything else to be addressed with any other revisions that would be coming back. On the same token, holding the public hearing open to have staff review this and work on revisions without knowing the temperament of the council in the first place? I mean, it could, it could or could not be a non-issue to begin with. So.
Well, on the other side of it, we've got a lot of public testimony that was printed that was at our seats that I read like quickly. I mean, we could take more time to consider the late testimony, all the late testimony that came in if we deliberated later on everything.
Would we, we'd still be taking, would it still be open for public testimony?
Yeah. So there, there's also another action in front of you that you, that you could consider and based on what the applicant put on the record, I'm going to defer to Spencer on how to navigate this, but you can keep the record open for a certain amount of time and then, but close the public hearing. So we keep the record open for seven days or whatever it is. The public hearing's closed tonight and then you still come back on the 25th, deliberate and make a decision, but you don't have the record open because we could, we, we, the majority of the testimony that we received in, in written form was all delivered today or yesterday afternoon. And so it's not an opportunity for anybody to really review that with any sort of time to really vet it through. But that, if you, if you kept the public hearing open, that could continue unless we decide to, and I don't know, Spencer, if we could close the receipt of testimony before the public hearing? I don't know how to avoid the getting everything the day before so that there's not the opportu, or the day of, so there's not the opportunity for you to really review it.
Yeah. So what you're touching on, the, the options that are available to the council are continuing the hearing and that would contemplate coming back at the next hearing with the record open, receiving testimony and receiving submittals up to and including that night. The, the other option is to close, close the hearing to public testimony and close the record this evening, excuse me, close the hearing this evening for public testimony, but keep the record open to a specific amount of time that it was defined so that you knew everything that was going to come in in writing would be in and time for you to review those documents and come back and deliberate after you've had an opportunity to digest that information.
I like the second option.
I like that too.
Yeah, the second option sounds much better.
Okay. So that would require motion to close.
Close the hearing.
Yeah. But keep the record open.
Is that also going to apply to staff's final resolution or our discussion with staff?
Well, I would, I would contemplate, I mean, I'll leave this up to the council, but I would contemplate that it would be at the one week period at which time everything is, needs to be available to the public and we just have it all up to that point.
Just to clarify the exception, if the record is left open for a date-specific time, that is going to include additional written testimony that anybody submits as well as the results of applicant's discussions, continuing discussions with staff?
Yeah. So I'll, I'll explain what you're, what he's kind of asking is because we leave the record open, close the hearing and leave the record open, we have to kind of follow the same process we followed with testimony this evening. Everyone can comment for a discreet period of time, seven days, seven days for anyone to respond to whatever was submitted during that first period. And then applicant has a final seven-day period to provide their final written rebuttal.
But it would end after the first week after this meeting?
Well, you go a week and then another week.
It's seven days, seven days, seven days.
I think, I don't understand. Please.
It's, it, each, everyone could comment for the next seven days.
Okay, I got that.
Then the record is closed and then what?
Then the record is closed and new testimony, but anyone can respond to what was submitted during that seven-day period during the next seven days. And then there's a last seven days allowed for the applicant to respond to anything else to provide final argument, what it's called final argument for that.
Okay. So does that mean then that our planning department only has seven days to review these requests by the applicant and if they want to make any adjustments in the recommendation to?
No, staff, staff can part, the, the applicant gets the final record submission, but staff can participate in those period, in those two periods where we're participating, where we're receiving information. That includes.
But I think to the counselor's point, so.
I think what.
I always thought it was keep the record open for seven days and then the applicant has a chance to rebut it the next seven days. But there's a rebuttal process for anybody in the record for the second seven days and then the applicant.
Yes. The second seven-day period is for, is for the applicant, but also anyone else. But there's a final seven-day period just for the applicant.
So that's 21 days. And then per our code, we need to publish any, any record for your decision-making for land use application one week in advance of your deliberation. So we would need to put, we would need to publish the staff report and any materials associated with that one week in advance. So that, to Counselor Drapkin's question, that 21 days of record open and rebuttal, rebuttal puts us right against that one week. We don't as staff have the chance to vet anything that's come through. And I just want to clarify, what we're doing is vetting it against the code. We're, we're not negotiating as somebody suggested. Forgot who, but we, what we will do, we just haven't had a chance to vet what's been proposed. If that's your choice, the city council, to have us do that.
So comments on that direction?
So really the first meeting in March is the most realistic option for you to actually be able to vet things?
Can we do less than seven days?
Well, so that, that, that rule typically applies to the initial evidentiary hearing. So I, you know, I, the city, if the city wanted to compress everything under state law, we could compress it. It's, but the standard is to do seven days just to give everybody kind of a week to respond.
Yeah. And so just so you all know, at the planning commission level, which is where the first evidentiary hearing occurs, we ask the question, do you want to keep the record open for seven days of anyone who's participated? And if they say yes, we do. And so that, that process already took place.
Right. This is, we're, we're following this process. This is a process we're just kind of, kind of reapplying now, not because state law mandates it, but we're trying to set up a procedure to get the information to the council that's sought.
And, and the other thing we haven't really talked about is we could just deliberate and come, I mean.
That's true.
So again, it's up to the direction of the council, what you would like to do and we get kind of a, a direction on that and move forward. So what's the wish of the council?
Spencer, can I interject one more thing? Can, can they deliberate and decide that conditions need to be, give us direction on conditions that they want to change or findings that they want to change?
Certainly they can.
And then we would bring that back.
Yeah.
For a final consideration.
If we wanted to refine it down a little bit, if the council thinks that it's able to do that tonight, we could do that.
Okay. All right.
So you've got a couple of different directions. What are?
So I, I mean, just generally speaking, I think that the staff concerns about the original provision 20 were on point. And I have concerns about the revisions that the applicant has submitted on that. I'm concerned about the density and the parking and the ability to put trees and all those other things. However, I'm also mindful of your comment that this gives us the opportunity to include parkland and have an intentional and planned development. So I'm, I'm inclined to give it the more, the more time. I'm fine also with deliberating further tonight to kind of make that next step a little shorter.
Shorter. I, I'll just look to my right. Wendy, what are your, your thoughts?
I'm leaning towards giving it more time, both from the perspective of giving us time to, us to get direction from staff regarding these revisions, but also I feel like we got some late, late material that we.
got some late material that we didn't have a chance to really internalize, although we did have some testimony that touched on some of it. But I think that there's more information needed, or I think it would be beneficial for our conversation to have internalized that information and have this additional information before we talk about it. So my bias is to give the additional time and come back and deliberate. That'd be my bias.
Thank you, Wendy. Zach?
I appreciate having staff's eyes all over this and getting their take. My take is I don't need any more time to get to yes on this. I'm not going to get to yes on their proposed, this number 20 amendments. I mean, this totally backdoors everything up until now that the Planning Commission and the staff fought for to make this, to push them in the ways that high density has pushed the citizens of McMinnville, that staff has pushed them to make better homes. They completely backdoored the entire process with everything they have in here. And so I don't see how more time's going to get me more comfortable with this. So, I'm happy to have more time, so we can, we can have more time to talk, and if they're going to toll the clock and let us do that, great, but if, I'm not comfortable with the direction of this, and if they're just going to shut it down, if we're not going to approve anything but what they gave us, I don't know where that leaves us.
Okay.
So that's my thoughts on number 20.
Thank you. Adam?
Yeah, definitely, if we're going to, if it's approved 20 or not, then definitely need to see another version of it. That being said, there's things in the subdivision that I'm not a fan of, so I would just be candid and say, you know, if we're tolling the clock to go through condition 20, that's great, but there's, you know, the 45-foot variance, not a fan of that. The two acres of commercial, not a fan of that. There's other things in there, too, but if we're not going to deliberate, I'll hold my tongue till then.
Remy?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, you know, I kind of echo a number of different sentiments. I haven't, I don't feel like I've been able to compare this thoroughly enough, given that we've been in conversation the whole time. What I have seen in the revisions, I don't like, and so I kind of, I'm in tune with what Zach was saying, that, you know, that, I think that condition of approvals that were suggested, you know, they were deliberate. I heard the word compromise, you said compromise many times, we can come to a compromise, and so also I would kind of echo that, that there's, it's not, this isn't a matter of compromise, this is, you know, meet the criteria and on the deciding side of it, and what works and doesn't work with our code. And quite honestly, I feel like the city is also giving a lot in this. There's, you know, there's a lot of adjustments throughout this entire application that there is a lot of give already. So, I certainly wouldn't be comfortable incorporating these changes tonight. I could deliberate, and I will not be upset if we keep the record open as long as it's done in a way which gives staff adequate time to review this, and if it's just keeping the record open and then it's putting the crunch on staff, then I don't see any reason to do that either. Sorry for not being...
Thank you, Remy. Kelly?
Well, I'm not going to vote for the revised 20. I am all for deliberating tonight and keeping it open to limited time just for the revisions, which hopefully they will reach some compromise on.
So, is there a majority that would like to close the hearing this evening, keep public written testimony open till, I think that's the 5th of February, which would be seven days?
We'd be open to that, Mayor, but are you contemplating ending the discussion at the point, I mean, are you looking for a motion now, or are we looking to talk?
Well, we've got to make a determination whether we're going to keep the hearing open or close it. We do need to do that.
I think we should close the hearing.
Okay. And if we, if we close the hearing, we do have the opportunity then to keep the record open, as we said, seven, seven. And I'll tell you one other piece that I think I need to share with the group. The 25th of February, I'm back in DC with Water and Light on legislative days for American Public Power, and so if we were to have...
A tie.
A tie, I would not be here. And so the thought would be, if it might be appropriate, to move that final vote to March 10th, I'll be back. But I'm right, that's our legislative day, and we're locked into that, so I'm not going to be here on the 25th of February. Throw that out, because, you would be able to, you'd be willing to have, bring it back...
A further time period.
Okay, on the 10th of March, okay. So, so am I hearing, let me get this right, am I hearing that we close the public hearing tonight and then hold the record open for seven days? It gives seven additional days for rebuttal, and then seven days for the applicant to address and back to us?
As has been pointed out, I'm not an expert in planning, so I'm a little lost in the weeds, but I want to make a decision on the whole thing tonight, but we've been presented with a torpedo that will not allow us to do that, is my rudimentary understanding of how I'm going to explain it to myself. So, in light of not being able to decide entirely on this tonight, because we...
That's not accurate, Zach, we could.
Yeah, we can.
Okay.
Good.
So, are we going to decide entirely on this tonight? Because I don't, I don't agree with anything that's in here, I'm going to ignore this was put in front of me, and I'm going to read what staff presented to me, and I'm going to deliberate and vote on that as part of this. I'm not, I'm not in support of this. So, I'm happy to make a decision tonight because I'm rejecting that.
Okay.
There's where I'm at.
Okay. So I'm just going to go back to, down the line again. Wendy, do you want to make a decision tonight?
Uh...
Yes.
At this point, I think we'd like to formally ask for a continuance.
Torpedo.
If that would be a progress.
Wendy, drop your bomb. Okay, so council, they've asked for a continuance.
Do we have any choice?
Yes.
Yes, we can accept it or not.
Why are you guys all looking at me?
So, again, that's what's before us now, tonight now, is a continuance. And Zach, you said...
Okay, in that light, I would not be in favor of a continuance, if that means we can make a decision tonight based on the information in front of us.
And Spencer, can you define what a continuance means? If it's a continuance of the public hearing or if it's a...
Right. Right, so, the public hearing portion, we're talking about closing the public testimony portion and continuing the hearing itself by leaving the record open, or closing the public testimony portion of this hearing and deliberating toward a decision without doing that.
Closing the hearing is a required step in deliberating and deciding tonight.
Yeah.
And they're asking us to keep that open, thusly preventing us from deciding tonight?
Correct.
Okay, so I am not in favor of granting that.
Okay. Wendy?
I would be willing to grant the continuance.
Sal?
Yeah, I would as well.
Adam?
I'm willing to grant a continuance of closing the hearing but leaving the record open, but I think there's more than condition 20 that should be considered by the applicant.
Remy?
So, I would be willing to grant the continuance, and largely that's based on the fact that it's almost 11 o'clock at night, and we're going to want to have thoughtful, long discussion about this, and, you know, I don't, I never like when we're making decisions after midnight, I don't think it's good.
We still got, we still got an hour, man!
Oh, yeah, we'll wrap this up in an hour, sure.
Kelly?
Like, five minutes for all of us after Zach.
I think we should grant him a continuance, if we can close the hearing.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we close the hearing, keep the record open for an additional week, and give the full three weeks for people to make their responses, and that we have a continuance at, in March 11th, I believe?
March 10th.
March 10th, yeah.
And then are we including any additional direction to staff in that?
I'm open to a friendly amendment, Remy.
What?
Direction.
That doesn't need to be...
I second.
Okay.
Okay.
And so, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to restate that for clarity on the record. The motion is to close the public hearing, close the record, except for written testimony, keep written testimony open for an additional seven days, February 4th, responses to that until February 11th, and then final written argument by the applicant on February 18th, and the deliberations would be scheduled for March 10th.
Okay. So do we have a motion on what our attorney, and do I have a second?
Second.
So it's been moved by Sal and seconded by Remy. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Nay.
Okay, and, excuse me.
Thank you.
And any nays?
Nay.
Okay. The motion passes on a vote of five to one.
Finally.
Okay. The applicant is allowed, and again, this is written testimony, the applicant is allowed seven days after the record is closed for written testimony, and we'll entertain anything from staff during that time also.
So now, Mr. Mayor, I think you may, the council may want to provide some direction towards staff on what to work toward during this period.
So, Heather, have you picked up the gist of what we're talking about, or is it as diluted as... Okay.
Based on the conditions of approval you have, as recommendations from Planning Commission and the findings associated with those, if there are conditions of approval that you think we need to continue to analyze and bring back to you in a different way, it'd be great to get that direction from you.
Okay. So I've heard a few that said they'd love to be able to receive written testimony and input from staff after you've had an opportunity to look at it carefully and have a discussion about that. I've heard others that says absolutely that that's not going to happen in their mind. But I think I've heard enough of you that would like to have a discussion, looking at the revision here or what it might, what it might look like.
For both condition number 18 and number 20?
I don't have any need to look at number 18.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't really have a need to look at 20 either, other than just of having, respectfully reviewing the request.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Just a point of clarification, there, condition 20 in the land development application is also here as condition 11 in the subdivision application, so just for clarification purposes, and what our intent was, was when we were addressing condition 20, it was both condition 20 in ED application as well as the mirrored image of that is condition 11 in subdivision, so, just out of clarification purposes.
I'd also like to see some clarity around the little bit I brought up earlier about grocery stores versus convenience stores, and especially because as that may or may not impact increased traffic, right? If you've got a convenience store, people are just stopping in and out to get cigarettes and soda versus...
So relative to neighborhood-serving commercial?
Yeah.
Any, Wendy or Sal, anything that you'd like to give staff that you'd want to see coming back, and Kelly also? Adam?
No, I just stick, reconfirming the point that I made, that I preferred the staff version of condition 20 significantly to the one the applicant sought and encouraged, something that moves much closer to what we had.
Wendy?
Well, I would, with regards to condition 20, I would concur. I think that's a really important element of this, whether we'd even consider for approval is those parameters. So, only other thing I can think of, but I don't know what clear direction I would give, is there's still some questions in my mind about traffic, particularly since that Michael Book-Baker interchange was identified, but I don't know if there's anything else they can bring to us with regards to it, I think I just need to think about it.
I would echo that, and I think the problem, I think that you and I might be hitting the same problem with the traffic, which is that this is one of those times when common sense isn't lining up with the information that's coming in.
And I have questions about, okay, so we approved a subdivision, we just approved a subdivision that had a traffic study, and now we approved another subdivision that had a traffic study, and I guess in my head, it might just be my head, but in my head, it's, the cumulative of that is what's the impact of the cumulative of that, so...
Can I comment on that?
Sure.
So I obviously had a concern, I voted against the previous application based on concerns about traffic, and so I, just using the traffic data from the opponents, so 9,000 trips plus 7,500 trips, I think, it might even be a little less than that, but that's 16,500 onto Baker Creek. And talking to Mike, he says that Baker Creek is designed for 20,000 max capacity. So, and says that ODOT is looking in maybe in the 2021 timeframe to fix the left turn on Baker Creek and maybe on the other intersection further up on Baker. And then we're left with the Michael Book-Baker Creek intersection, but I felt a lot better about it, knowing that those turn lanes are going to be coming in in the next year or two, possibly.
Right, right.
I mean, that's my thinking on it, anyway.
So, and that's where I don't know if it's giving direction or just me internalizing a little bit more, because I know that...
But you're going to want to have that as a part of the discussion.
Yeah, I'd like to confirm that understanding, for sure.
Yeah, so what I was going to say is, what I heard was sort of fragmented information, and maybe what we can do is sort of, do we all need to leave now?
Yeah, time's up.
You need to start working, chief!
Get handed to the facilities manager.
That's for the Planning Commission, you guys.
What I heard was fragmented information and confusion associated with that, and maybe what we can do as staff, much like we did with the floodplain discussion, is try to put more, try to put it more into context and the science and give more information to you relative to that as, during, before we come back to you. So your next meeting packet would have more information that sort of pulls all that together.
That would be super helpful, just for my understanding of...
And we'll review the testimony and what's been provided relative to all that as well. That testimony came in this afternoon, too.
Great, thank you so much.
Okay. Any other comments for staff? Hearing none, then?
Oh, I got one.
Oh, go ahead, Adam.
I guess parking in that commercial zone, if we're going to have two or three stories, 35 or 45 feet, and how that all plays out with our parking mandates of the city, I mean...
Yeah, so we will...
As counter parking spots, I know how hard that is to put something up.
No, so it's in the standards, we have design development standards relative to the parking, and we actually address the mix in terms of the multifamily and the commercials. So, what we'll do, much like what we did for this evening, we heard, we heard elements that you still have concerns about, that you need more information about, and so we'll highlight those and dive into them a little bit deeper in the staff report to provide to you what's in the condition of approval, why it's in there, and if there's anything else that you want to put in there. If that's helpful.
Yeah.
We'll do that with the... We'll do that with the parking. For that commercial, for that commercial parcel relative to what, if there was a mixed use development, what would it look like? Is what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
I have one other comment on the commercial as well. I brought this up before, I can't recall. Is this where we would inject any language about limiting drive-through? So, I mean, that's something I personally would, would want to see in there, that drive-through restaurants would not be permitted.
Right. Yeah.
Standalone or end cap?
Standalone or end cap?
Like the Dutch Brothers.
So standalone would be like a KFC and an end cap would be like Laughing Bean Bistro.
Yeah, Laughing Bean would be a good example down on West Second and Hill Road.
Yeah, and it's very benign.
But
It is very benign. Do they, is their drive-through even open?
Yeah, it is.
It is.
Does it have an impact?
In the morning.
Is it an impact?
No, it's open.
I think they were talking about putting an In-N-Out over there right near you.
Putting an In-N-Out burger in, is that what you just said?
Okay. So Heather, do you feel like you've got the direction from counsel?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Now, we have a couple of other items this evening and those, feel free to go if you're traveling. I'm so sorry, but we did have a public hearing this evening at 7 o'clock. We now have the opportunity to invite for public comment. I have two comment cards that were given to us. And so is Jessica Barr still here?
Oops.
And is Valerie Slane still here?
I believe I spoke with them and they were going to come back to a future meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Chuck. We had our, we had our Level 10 meeting tonight where we had an opportunity to give a little bit of report on what was happening well. Anyone like to share any additional information on committee assignments or board assignments?
I would like to.
Go ahead.
I just a comment on, Visit McMinnville had their regular meeting since our last meeting. And during that meeting, we had the attorney for land use there and I put on everyone's place the, what he brought us on the current law for TLT tax and how it can be used for infrastructure. So I just thought I would put it out for you guys. I'll probably have another handout for you next time, but I thought you might like to take a look at that. And honestly, I don't have a lot of comments on it, but I think it's interesting and you should know what it says.
Thank you, Kelly. Just to remind everyone that next Monday, February 3rd, from 4 to 6, is the State of the City and recognition of our volunteers with our pillar and Legacy Award. That will be at MAC Market and we'd invite each of you to come and be a part of that. Department heads, anything? I want, you want to go home? Okay, we have one resolution tonight. It'll be a short one. Resolution 2020-7, and there was a spider. They come out at 11:05, okay?
That was their alarm clock.
Yeah. It woke them up. And so I will call on Heather, I think?
Susan.
Oh, Susan, yes.
I almost left at the break, but I remembered I had an item. This is follow-up quickly from your October 22nd work session. As you know, we're working on a facilities master plan and we are looking at studying replacing the aging community center and aquatic center in one facility. You asked us to include the study of the library in that, so we're looking at their programming needs and the condition and future potential of the current library building as well as city hall and fire administration. And the first step was to get an advisory committee up and running. So Jenny Berg and I got to work on that and we enlisted Kylie Byer to help with that and we used the Filter of MAC Town 2032 for that and kicked off the recruitment on November 18th. We did a couple of different things in this recruitment. We used NeoGov, which is the city's new human resources recruiting webpage, and that worked great. We had 40 applicants. We had some of them come in for what we called speed interviewing, for 15-minute interviews, which was really enlightening. And Jenny and I want to thank Counselor Garvin and Arturo Vargas for helping on that panel and with the whole selection piece. We mapped out the addresses of the applicants, we looked at their history of participation in the program. Another new thing we're trying is we are providing childcare during the meetings. We also offered childcare during the interviews. No one took us up on that. We were a little surprised, but we will have it and people are taking us up on it during the committee meetings. So we recruited with the filter of, we want to make sure people are going to be respectful, they're supporting data-driven approach on this, encouraging creativity and a commitment to improving outcomes for historically underserved or underrepresented populations. So we came up with a list of 20 for you in your packet today. We went ahead and talked to a couple of people about being co-chairs for it so that we could have that set up before the committee started meeting. The committee kicks off on February 6th, that's 6:30 PM at the community center, and we are posting all of the agendas and everything on the webpage, whaddoyouthinkmac.org.
Okay. And in your packet, you had the names of the 20 individuals and I think you also have two alternates, correct?
Correct.
So what I will do is ask for counsel discussion or any questions that you may have for Susan.
We're going to look at taking that approach to getting all the neo.gov.gov or whatever, that process to all of our committee, trying to get all the people to apply through that because it seems like a great way to hard, to understand who's coming in and how that applies and fills out our committees better and as a resource to going forward to tap people and say, hey, we've got another opportunity for you to get involved.
We did get some negative feedback about it because it's a little bit lengthier than just telling somebody that they want to be appointed. So there was a little bit of that that I think Kylie will want to look at, but generally I think that's, that's one of the reasons why we piloted is to see how it worked. Certainly for collecting demographic data, it's great for that and we can then measure how we're moving forward in that. The selection committee did not look at the demographic data, but we collected it so we can use it going.
Cool. Okay. So any, any further discussion?
I would add, just with a slight question from Remy, that we did balance really well all the demographics and that we're not, you know, heavy on the swim side or heavy on any one particular area, that we're very thoughtful in that and Susan and Jenny did a great job in presenting that to us and they're great to work with.
Yeah, it looks to me that we've got great diversity and we're really thoughtful in that process, as Susan indicated. Okay.
I move that we approve Resolution 2020-07.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by Remy, seconded by Adam. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying nay. Resolution 2020-7 passes, you now, six to zero. Given the time of the night and the spiders are coming out, let's go ahead and close and adjourn this meeting.